Helping us with the workaround now. All right, I will officially call this meeting to order and we will start with a roll call of council members. And we're all here, so in person. Tricia, you want to start? Want to just go around the room?
Uh, Tricia out there, do it here.
Vicky one, cut here.
Laurel Hill Ward here.
Chelsea Parker here.
Leanna Glaner here.
Kristen Woods here.
Great. All right, can I get somebody to read this school verse?
I'll do that.
Thank you, Vicky.
This is our school, may peace be well. May the rooms be full of contentment, may love abide here, love of one another, love of our school and love of life itself. Let's remember that as many hands build a house, so many hearts build a school.
Great, thank you. Right, that'll take us to item 1.4, are there any agenda modifications today? Okay. And then that will take us to item 1.5, audience members to address the council. If there are any audience members here to address the council and items not currently on the agenda, um, this is the time to do so. Okay, hearing none.
Chelsea, can I address the council?
Yes, is this on something that is not on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, great, then you have three minutes, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, recently at the last, um, parent council meeting, I had addressed a discussion that was for a anti-bullying campaign called Walls and Stalls. And it's something that I wanted to try and implement at our school from, for the sixth grade through eighth grade classes. Which would, what's that would look like in an average day would be a ten-minute allotment at the end of the day for each grade Monday through Friday, with the exception of Thursday, to go in and check the walls and stalls for any type of graffiti within, you know, a three-week period because 21 days, make or break a habit, we can have a nice bathroom and I have a wonderful nonprofit organization that's willing to paint wonderful quotes or, um, words of inspiration in our bathrooms 100% for free. And that was something that I would like to be able to, uh, get on the charter council agenda, so that way we can move forward with that.
All right, well, thank you so much, Nicole.
You're welcome.
I will connect with Susan and we will see what needs to happen to discuss this further.
Okay, wonderful, thank you so much for your time, everyone.
Thanks, have a good evening.
Thank you, you too.
Okay, are there any other audience members here to address the council? Okay, hearing none, that'll take us to item two on the agenda, that's the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
This is Leanna, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Leanna, do you have a second?
My second.
Thank you, Laurel. I will call for the vote.
Tricia out there, do I?
Vicky one, cut, I.
Laurel Hill Ward, I.
Chelsea, I.
Leanna, I.
Kristen, I.
All right. Great, so that'll take us to item three, Sarah and Nick with the grade level report.
Okay, hi, everybody, I'm going to share the, first of all, good evening, everybody. And I apologize in advance if my crazy dog right here barks, he's being kind of wacky, so if he barks while I'm presenting, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So, let me, can I share my screen now? Great. All right, I'm just gonna go put him outside real quick, I'll be back in 20 seconds.
Yeah, I could, I could feel it in the building. It's like falling down.
Sorry, Nick, you stepped away, we acknowledged the thunder earlier and how loud it was.
Yeah, it was pretty cool. I was outside when it was hailing, it was really fun. Okay.
Why the dog wasn't set.
Oh, he just wants me to play with him, that's all. Yeah. Okay, so Ms. Katie's fourth grade, uh, shared that their class just completed a Norse project slash class play block, which was a great way to book into the thrilling triad of Norse mythology blocks we have this winter. For our projects, many students selected the Norse shield project and they turned out amazing. I did see the shields the kids brought in and they were, they seemed to have a lot of fun with them. These turned out as really handy props for our play, The Theft of Thor's Hammer, way to go, fourth grade. Then Ms. McDonald's third grade, the third grade has been busy working in on practical skills. We have made fire cider, learned about compost and made compost jars to study. We separated seed from dried plant material, baked challah bread and even peach cobbler from the school's peach tree. We've also been working on the relationship between multiplication and division and hearing the stories of the Hebrews. Ms. Madera's eighth grade class play, so they performed Much Ado About Nothing. Uh, and, uh, I, I got to work with them on it and they were very into it and I hope it went well. So lower grades handwork with Ms. Claire for Read Across America Day. Uh, she enlisted the help of fifth grade to reenact part of the book Little Witch Hazel, which is a very sweet story about a gnome who helps out her forest community. We made costumes and props during our handwork time and then performed for the whole school at the assembly. Lower grades, class, uh, handwork, uh, very proud first grade members, love the smile from the student on the left. And then Spanish, so they've been reading a story, it looks like, Martina the Beautiful Cockroach, a Cuban folk tale. We read this story and had discussions about the coffee test, why it worked and if Martino made the correct choices. We listened to the story That Is Not My Name and talked about the importance of calling people by their names correctly. We also got to do some research and find out what our names mean. We made the popular gods eyes and looked at their meanings and origins, as well as some other of the culture of the indigenous Huachil people who live in the Sierra Madre Mountains, and I apologize if I mispronounced that, especially since they read a book about pronouncing words correctly. Uh, Ms. Jones, uh, they just finished their first medieval history block, oh, it's a fun time. Ms. Lee's seventh grade, Ms. Lee's class is tackling a favorite seventh grade ELA standard, argumentative writing. They are learning about how to form and articulate a strong argument. This includes the following key components, strong claim, clear reasons with strong evidence, acknowledging and refuting counter arguments to your claim, a strong closing statement. And the seventh graders are approaching the standard with great enthusiasm and thoughtfulness. Individual essay topics include superiority of black cats, how nuclear power is a safe option, potatoes are the most versatile food, everyone should attend college, video games are bad and social media is bad for some relationships, great wide breadth of thumbs. Uh, Maplewood's kindergarten, we see some of the puppets that she uses for one of the stories, the silent maiden, and they had a field trip to the snow. Uh, I don't know who it was, but whoever brought the snow and made the snowman, that was a super fun surprise. And they have their Valentine's tea party. And a super fun tradition at our school is during Read Across America Week, each class decorates their door based around a book. And so each class participated in this and if you go around the school, they're all still up. So here are the various doors. And that is all that I have to share for you today, thanks, everybody, and I apologize for the loud dog in the background.
No. Thanks, Nick. Thank you so much, Nick. It's so great to see everything the kids are doing, or not everything, but a glimpse into what the kids are doing. All right, does anybody have any questions for Nick? Or Sarah? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Oh, thank you, we so appreciate it. Um, all right, so that will take us into item four, governance, Susan, would you like to lead us off with return to ground action norms?
Sure, I think we have, as we've communicated with each other over the past, um, weeks or so, they are aware that the governor has removed the emergency act to end COVID. There's a couple of issues that came from that, one of them is to return to the regular ground act expectations, so thank you all for coming on down. We are continuing to, um, have the Zoom available for guests to be able to come from wherever, um, they need to be, so that we can continue to have more, um, interaction. Um, but we will be returning, um, to being onsite with all, um, members and when we're making decisions, so thank you all for me. And we will also have available space, um, for guests to come onsite as well.
All right, does anybody have any questions about the return to ground action norms? All right. We don't need a motion because that's a requirement. I was just making sure, Mike, are we gonna, we have to vote to follow the law?
Yeah.
I don't think so. All right, uh, Tricia, finance committee report.
Yeah, that would be me. That would be me.
I'm just reading the agenda.
We went over, um, donations over $500 and we said, um, mention a lady's name that I can't remember.
Michelle, yeah.
Michelle, yes, she had very generous donations. We looked at the travel expense policy and passed it. We looked at, we spoke of the audit. This CLA audit firm, um, and that we like the one that we've been using and want to stick with that and that's coming up and needs to be finished. If I don't finish my April first.
Yes, so we need.
Yeah. Um, and you're gonna be talking about this also with the, uh, Form 700 is also an observation we have to take care of. Um, and Brian Sanders, we have some producer designation from the finance committee. And then we had our director's, uh, report. We did have, um, good mention that we have, um, kind of a financial pinch coming up, just a time that is gonna be, things are gonna be a little bit tight. And then funds, as we are always waiting for months to show up, April show up.
Or was I mean issue?
Yeah. Right, um, and we are, we've got a plan for, uh, mental health services. So needed by. Well, so that, that will be shown.
Uh, this current, this school is gonna show as well.
No, it'll be next week, yeah. When the money, when the money will actually show.
So this difference.
Always a question. But we did, it's the grant that, um, Amanda and, or Randy and, um, Amber worked on for designing a mental health system for Blue Oak. We talked about it and it approved.
Well, we found out from the state superintendent on his little list that he sent out that we are being approved, that's how we know.
Great.
We're still waiting, there's like somebody to tell us officially, directly and officially, but it is.
That may come with your first check.
Oh, yeah, by the way, yeah, it was pretty quick.
Is this regarding the staff support that you wanted onsite for, and support for staff in general, or students?
So it's a planning grant, so the purpose of it is to have somebody really focused on, on what it is we fully need and, um, how to do that, so there'll be work around, um, working with stakeholders, working with other providers in the area, um, you know. We work with, I think, Northern Valley Catholic Social Services is allotted to us for, um, mental health services. So really to, to do that planning and, and when we wrote the grant, we were looking at all of the things we have tried to put in place and like the wellness room is doing pretty well, but it took us two years now to get it to a place where it was actually efficient. And so, and we're gonna continue to support that and, and all of those things around mental health. There's another grant that then, once we did the planning grant, then we'll be ready to apply for the full grant to pay for those.
So I'm just curious if you'll be sending out surveys or questionnaires or anything to the students, okay?
All that was, you know, the, the majority of that money is intended to go towards that sort of work, like who's gonna actually do that.
Okay.
And so we're wanting to look at, um, either current staff that could do it or someone to bring in that would, um, help us to do that kind of development, have those kind of connections. So that will be, once we get the formal note, that's kind of the work it'll be. And that, it, it will cover more than two years of the staff, so, okay, so that's.
That's really exciting.
That's, that's the plan and hopefully to get, yeah, to a, a strong vision, you know, health for Blue Oak, so.
Susan, here, maybe what, the name of the other counseling they're with, contracting with?
There was, um, well, Emma Todd is who we, Todd counseling, is who we contract with. And Northern Valley Catholic Social Services is one of two, you guys probably know this better than I do, but one of two private sort of practices that work in schools. And there's been, through behavioral health, I believe, assignments of schools to certain programs. So Northern Valley Catholic Social Services is the one we reach out to and who does, um,
The online.
The on, well, they actually do the onsite services.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so.
So there's both.
Yes, so depending on how it's paid for, you know, all of those pieces. And again, that's what we wanna to, um, start doing with this grant, like when can we bill, um, Medicare, when, you know, all of those, how do we do that?
So that's working out all so far?
It's working fine.
Good.
You know, yeah.
Okay.
I, we still need like a plan, because what happens is, yeah, so, yeah, but it is working fine and, um, we're feeling good. Uh, there, there just is not enough therapy and true, real support in the community. So there's, we're, we're always kind of going, how are we gonna serve this family, are we gonna serve this child? Because there are no appointments to be had.
Okay.
In all right, that's, that's often what we do.
And, and then just, like, Vicky, so Ryan resigned, does that still leave like two seats available? We still needed parents, don't we, in the finance committee? Two, three, just to.
We don't have any parents now.
We wouldn't. I think technically there is like up to 10 seats. But at least two would be great to have solid parents.
We do need to have.
I would really like to have, see, we have.
Well, we brought snacks.
Four staff, we have four staff members, I would like to see four parents.
Yeah.
Yeah. Four staff members, four parents. We've been running the last couple of years, number of years, with primarily staff. That is uncomfortable for me that we're presenting financial decisions and everyone, the majority of the people voting are.
The nature of the school, no parents.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, the majority of the people suggesting to the board what to do are directly affected by those financial decisions.
Right, that's makes it, that might be a good appeal to parents, though, that you're uncomfortable without them there, you know, I mean, it, it, that, that shows great concern on your part that they be represented.
Yes, it is important, I, I talked to the co-chairs today, again, talking to faculty about, do you know specific parents that have this talent or interest? And we can reach out and call directly, because we've done the all call many, many times and not really gotten responses. I've gone to each of the, to the classroom meetings at the end of the year, asking, no response. So had to beg Ryan to come and took his arm, came for a while, um, and did a great job, he was wonderful, but, um, but now he is not able to come under the Brown Act restrictions. So we're back to like just staff. We can do it with the staff, it's just not, but very healthy.
I think it'd be great as you're at the parent council to, you know,
That's what I was gonna have.
To share that there, um, because as far as I know, and correct me if I'm wrong, Susan, but unlike, um, you know, something, it's, they can, you can be on parent council and serve on the finance committee.
So what was his brandness restriction?
Well, he can come, um, in person. Oh, because of the change recently.
Got it, got it, got it, okay. Um, but then I would also.
Hours, right, I mean, technically we're talking about volunteer hours, the parents are supposed to, yeah, they always have to go to the classroom, it can be in committees, it can be in.
I would also really encourage you to share with parents too, that you don't have to have a knowledge of finance or financial systems, because a lot of it is just looking at things and seeing if they make sense and like saying, is it, you know, is it responsible for a school to spend any dollars on this or that or whatever? It doesn't have to be that you know how to balance a budget or design those things, I mean, that's not the role, so. And maybe helping to change that narrative too, because I think so often, um, people are really intimidated by the finance committee. Um, it took me a really long time to get off the finance committee as a board member, because, you know, even, even trying to explain to other board members that you don't have to be a finance person. Um, because it's really a collaboration, I mean, we, we pay a really good back office finance company to help with the nitty gritty and the details, it's just the oversight and asking the questions. Um, and so that, I feel like appeals to a larger. But I feel like that appeals to a larger group of parents, that oversight piece, that knowing where the money is going piece versus like feeling like being on finance committee means you have to be able to make a budget. Not so affecting the, the school culture and direction, you know.
Absolutely.
Decision on what to do with money, you know.
Because we can't, as charter council, we can't be a committee member, just away, so we can just attend.
You have, you, you have one member on the council.
Yeah, the check, yeah.
And we would have to be careful as far as, um, potential ground out violations of too many, you know, we have board members for two, to attend a meeting.
I don't see it happening against finance committee.
But you are welcome, of course, to listen in or, and attend within, like.
We don't all come at the same time.
Yes, unlike, unlike parent council, um, or unlike charter council, parent council can be
an officer of parent council and if they so choose to also be on.
Yeah, I really enjoy finance, because I think it gives you a really good insight on.
I feel like finance is one of the most well-structured committees, because you're dealing with very black and white.
Yeah.
Either there's, the numbers are there or they're not.
And this is the committee that stands for, um, supporting our Title I program. It's a committee that has done, um, strategic plan, worked significantly on the strategic plan, um, needs, I mean, so, so we use that committee as a truly representative committee for, um, other areas, and so not having any parents on it is.
Yeah.
It's problematic, you know, in many ways, and to be making those decisions without parents on it, you know, we do our best, but we are staff, you know.
Just, I just want to ask this, is that still the same with equity task force too, or are you still missing?
We're still missing, we still don't have parents on that either. But I'll take some of that, because I've committed to doing some outreach to specific people who have shown interest in the past and might have done that, so I take more, like, I have a step to do. Oh, I think kid that tells somebody else, they might wanna do that for.
I think we maybe know somebody.
Maybe we can know somebody.
There she is.
Yeah, it's Monday, I wish we could change it, I think, I've had a couple of people interested on Friday, but I don't know, I know it's Friday. It can be real quick and out instead of, you know, Monday, maybe getting late or starting or being more flexible about it.
All right, we can definitely look at different times and dates, so.
All right, well, before we go too far down the rabbit holes, um, are there any questions for Vicky or, um, about the finance committee report? Okay, thank you, Vicky, that takes us to you, Kristen, your council report.
Um, it was a good meeting, they, um, again, talked about a few fundraising projects for CalDava again. They're getting closer to a contact on that and kind of closing their decision to prove to go with the application. Um, they definitely have their committee ready for May fair, so they're gonna start planning for our end of the year batch, that's really everything looks forward to, I think. And the fundraiser for Ms. Jennifer is doing well, I think it hit over 4,000 already, so again, they have worked in a match, DC meeting was gonna put 5,000 who was ever raised, so it's just amazing, the community coming together. Um, Nicole chimed in, she brought up that, the anti-bullying, um, and we had the report from Mr. Meyer. And that was kind of it. Really, and then I gave them.
That's a lot, that's a lot. That's great, does anybody have any questions for Kristen about parent council?
Oh, teacher appreciation, we come here, so.
What are the dates on that?
First week of May.
First week of May, yeah.
First week of May.
May fair, Saturday.
Volunteer the question.
May fair, Saturday, but not, it isn't.
I think it's Saturday, May 15th?
Yeah, I think the following week is.
The Saturday.
Yeah, yeah, and then the following week is the teacher appreciation.
So it's, sorry, I missed that, it's May 6.
Thank you.
May 6 is the May fair, so then teacher appreciation would be the 8th through the 13th?
You have a question?
Oh, I was just wondering for the, um, bathroom, the walls and stalls. It would be really fun just to see some samples, since there is a local artist that's willing to do that at no cost. If we could just see some of their stuff.
I think there are still some steps that it needs to go through.
Yes, I bet, yeah, yeah. Before, when, when that does happen, yeah.
Get some examples.
That's a very good idea, Liam, I have thought of that. I am, I had committed to the parent council and, um, that I would reach out to the middle school teachers to see how that would work with. You know, could it be something we could work into the jobs, which is the end of the day, and how we would structure that for the children in the well and school? And so that's where we are right now, is that discussion.
Yeah.
And, but that's a good, like.
Well, I'm curious just also if the students wanna, um, commit to like adding some slogans that they like, that they have some buy-in, so.
Or their art information, and their art. Why shouldn't it be all student?
Yeah, so there's that, um, we have the Michael's Club and I was noticing there, they have, um, some slogans out in the hallways that they've done, that, you know, that the after-school program, they have put some positive, you know, you know, statements from their processes as well, so.
Yeah, I've noticed some places are coming up with campaigns and the students aren't necessarily agreeing, you know, feeling like it's in their language or things like that, so sometimes it's nice, um, if it's a student, you know, led a little bit, or just at least like they take their top three or something like that.
It is a different language.
Yeah.
Exposing them to slogans and then having them come up with their own, they may get, they're the same thing, but have them come up with their own.
Exactly. It's amazing how a little bit of a change in the language can resonate with the kids.
Yeah.
All right, awesome.
I was wondering, could you talk, what if one of your people on parent council gave up their spot and came over to the finance committee?
And then get a rep, a different rep? They don't have to give it to you.
You can be on parent council and on finance committee.
I know, but maybe they don't wanna be out to, you know, it's, yeah.
So, so a lot of answer to that right now today is we're short about three members in parent council.
Parent council.
So we would not, yeah.
Paul, I think, is the thing.
We just need more parents.
Now, there's a couple hundred families at this school. I think there's maybe a few parents up there.
And literally, finance committee is usually at most in our, we very seldom have long finance committees.
And it's. Maybe that's a good advertisement.
And it's earlier than you, you know, so it's, you know, so we start at 4:15, we're usually done by 5:30 easily. I shouldn't say that, should I, but, you know, because the, the next time we do it, it'll be in the morning. But it is, you know, it is, takes a little study upfront, but it is.
And I think too, with everything coming back in person, you know, there's, there's also that getting used to that again too, so there's.
I think if anyone comes to mind too, I think it's always an honor to be asked if someone, um, yeah, it's just. And sometimes people don't feel like they're qualified or things like that, but knowing the commitment time and then just to be known, know that you were considered or thought of.
And knowing that somebody will kind of mentor them, you know, like.
That's a good point too.
Yeah. All righty, um. All righty, um, if there's no more questions about the parent council report, we'll move into, uh, the equity and inclusion task force report.
Susan? So again, this is not a strength of the school right now as far as that meeting actually happening. And I do take some responsibility with being out for a month. It's kind of slow a number of things like this down. But we are continuing to do work, having the, um, the assemblies monthly, this month, Women's History Month, last month, one of the Black History Month. Um, the pedagogical team is working on, um, reviewing the curriculum glance, um, which goes through each year and says what we cover. And so I asked specifically for them to look at social studies and science, science, just to make sure that it's correct because that is one of the areas that the specialties connect to. So, um, the handwork might do a, a project that matches that year's, um, science with, um, with during that block. So they try to do that, so that would help them. But for the task force, it's really the social studies because we have talked and we have increased the diversity in, um, the work that we're doing through the social studies programs, but we haven't documented what our intention is in each year. So to make, to formalize that in a way that says
Articulate it.
Is not just doing Hebrew stories, they're also doing X, Y, Z. And in fourth grade, we do talk about, um, Japanese history because that connects closely to California history. You know, those sorts of things that we're talking about doing, and the teachers have developed, but we haven't formalized it yet. So that's, that's sort of where we are with some of this cultural work is how, how formalized have we made it? If we're making progress, but let's document it as, yes, this is not what we think we're going to do anymore, what we're going to try. This is not what we're doing. So that's kind of the year we're in today.
Okay.
Has, um, any of the science teachers talked about Henrietta Lacks? In the, um, that's a fun one and it incorporates science and history. And there's a really good, um, film that just came out recently on it, um, on the her, the HeLa cells. Um, super fascinating.
So my parent, my teacher reps still here though? Do they, um, if, Sarah, can you possibly answer that question? Do you know anything that just popped up?
Yeah, I'm here. Um, I, I would wager that Henrietta Lacks has not been talked about, but I can't say for certain, um, um, yeah. But it would definitely be a way that, that stories like that could be incorporated into the science curriculum. Maybe in like, uh, physiology or something in seventh grade, so, so that's a really great idea.
Cool. It's a really good new film and information and like, wow, society that has come out all in the name of that family. And it's, I mean, so much science because like the cells circum, that are, you know, can go around the United States or the world like six times or something like that. And it, it's just all super fascinating and big, big history stuff in there as well as science and all.
Where, where is the, um, video available? I, I've read about her, but I looked.
So there's one full book, one book that the, one gal spent like 12 years writing. Um, and then the movie is definitely on Apple and Amazon.
Okay.
Um, they just incorporate so many different pieces of education, um, and with science, history, you know, all this.
It's also, it, it brings up a really great discussion about, um, equity and equality.
That's what made me think, yeah.
Yep, so definitely some of the opportunities there that we can take into further.
Sounds good.
But in the name of keeping on track. And I'm like, no. Are there any other questions or comments for the equity and inclusion task force? All right, that will take us into item 4.5, the COVID-19 response.
So again, as I talked about with the Brown Act norms, the emergency related to COVID-19 has been lifted in California. There has been, along with that, a reduction in the expectation of time in isolation. And it is now no more than five days and a test, a negative test is not required. So that's all, um, we're working with through our, um, health staff. And, um, so therefore, of course, and I think because, um, of other reasons, there is much fewer responses and of, of having to, um, announce a exposure in classes. So, so we are, we're still have, we still have a few in the February timeframe, but not at all like what we were having in January. So.
So, I know we initially put the COVID-19 response on the agenda, um, because we were in the ever-changing climate. And it was like constantly, I mean, every time we met, there was new direction guiding. And it's not a requirement to have on the agenda. Um, is this something that you feel like, Susan, that we need to keep on there for longer? Or my fellow board members, um, is that something that we'd be necessary to continue or would like to?
I'll just express my opinion, I feel we can take it off because considering all of the meetings I've been, I don't think many parents are coming here for COVID updates. Those are usually to refer the director. And so I think if there's any changes, it's, you know, they're going to get directly through the class and the reps. So we always have a lot to cover. I would say, I would hope to maybe take it off.
I agree with it.
Yeah, me too. I think it'll become something that we don't.
Yeah, so I feel like the, the intention when they put it on there, um, has kind of moved away, especially with the emergency status that have been lifted.
There is a big, when we put it on, there's a big concern about exposures in the classroom, in the community, not just here.
Right.
And that really, you know, from the responses we get to, hey, there's an exposure in your class. And it's just not as intense as it was. And I, you know, and we do, they are notified whenever there's a, um, is an exposure in their class. And they kind of know what they need to do for their family for that. And so, you know, you'll see kids coming for a while with an extra bats go on, you know. So they, it's not, it's not as heightened as it was, so we would require to take off.
Okay, um, then would somebody like to make a motion that we discontinue? Do we even need to do that or we just?
You don't need to.
I don't just need. It's not required.
You can say.
So direction, direction to do, and then, um, it sounds like it is the consensus of the board, you know, it's no longer required. Regularly, um, you know, with the caveat that if, if there are any COVID-19 updates that you update us.
I will.
That, that are, you know, out of the ordinary.
Or if someone's in their staff, doesn't have to be.
Right, right, but that it, yes, if, if there's anything substantial that changes.
And we'll put the next pandemic on.
Yeah. That's just for the majority to say that and move into items.
I think one in our lifetime.
Ninety, in 90 more years.
Yeah, yeah. So none of us will be.
All right, so we will move then into 4.6 because we have three policies to review tonight. Um, starting with the travel expense policy, second reading. Um, and I know that with this being the second reading, we are able to, um, vote on it tonight. Um, I apologize that I wasn't able to make the last meeting. I don't have any changes, just a recommendation as this policy is being implemented. Um, that some of the procedure in there is, um, since, since it that alcoholic beverages will not be paid for, which I agree with. Um, but that, um, you ensure to tell any staff that's going to be, um, dining, that they need to bring the itemized receipt because that's one thing that I know confuses a lot of people or that, you know, mixes people up when they bring the receipt back. That's the customer copy that's just where you sign, that doesn't actually have the item. So just making sure that your staff is aware of that because that's a tricky one that's easy to forget. And not that, not that anybody's like trying to sneak anything on there, but then for audit purposes, clearly, you know, if you can't clear, you can't see what they ordered.
I agree.
And you can't ensure that.
Sure, the mom call is purchased.
Right, yeah. Very, yes. And so just giving them that heads up in advance, just kind of eliminate some of the headache when they come back and you say, oh, well, we can't. Or if that audit does come up that was mentioned, you know, that.
Yeah, and a real clear description of that because, yeah.
Not necessarily anything that needs to specifically be in the policy, but just something that they think it's worth educating.
Well, and we are, as we work through this, and I think you'll notice when we cover the, um, communicable diseases, um, policy, that we're working on writing the standard operating procedure at the same time to support it. We're not quite, we're just getting there, but the idea that, you know, the board approves at higher level, yes, we want children to be healthy and we don't want children going to infect other children, but that's, that's that policy. But then to be able to say that means that if you found these, these, and I'm on, you should be at school. And so that's, that's part of, um, I'm really pleased and we'll get there to, with that, um, policy, how that worked out. So I could do both of those for you. And so to begin to like share that with you, don't approve the operating procedures, but so you know, it's, we're not just saying, be healthy. We're saying like, this is what it means. So that's, so we will, we have some of that all ready for the, um, travel expense work. And, and we'll make sure that we have that clarified, so.
Yeah, and I thought that was really great. I mean, I've, I've seen a lot of travel expense policies and I, I think it looks really great.
And your praise is very appreciated because I do know that you know this.
Oh, yeah.
So we did make, um, and after taking input from the finance and the charter council last, um, month, Maggie and I did go back through and make, make some changes, um, increasing the, increasing the breakfast, increasing, um, lunch and dinner, and then removing the five dollar incidentals. So, um, that and some demo or sort of things like tips and whatnot, from what we understand. So therefore, um, that, those things that we.
So, could I just ask, would it, would it solve some of that? Could you go just back down a little bit? If, if that's instead of, um, okay, uh, research, uh, receipts should be submitted for every item of expense. Would it be, uh, if it were to say, for example, descriptive itemized receipts should be submitted for, uh, every expense? Might that clarify that a little bit?
Kind of just receipts?
Yeah.
Itemized.
So I would say that I, I would recommend avoiding that only because it really only pertains to meals. Like, so your hotel and travel expenses, um, as long as they're within your per diem rate or, um, then they don't necessarily need to be itemized. So then you have, or it says itemized receipts have to be presented, but then not everyone gets you an itemized receipt. And that's, so, um, and then also if it's in there and it says itemized receipt and you do have somebody that, you know, that must be submitted, then there's no flexibility if somebody does bring back the wrong receipt. And, you know, it's like if you bring back a receipt from Starbucks and it's not itemized, well, we know that they don't sell, they don't sell alcohol or anything that we can't reimburse for. But if it's in the policy work versus the operating procedure.
You make a good point, Chelsea, yeah.
I was tying my hands so tight that we can't help out our staff.
I always appreciate a good, like, bold underline, like, under the meals area. I know if I'm reading of her instructions and it's just, you know.
If you scroll down, Alex, I think she's got like the, the dollars.
I was meaning like re, the itemized, like if it's, if it's bolded, then that would give me the indication of, oh, yeah, before I check out, I need to ask for the other. Not to overstate or do a must, but just if it's emphasized with a bold underline.
I think that's a good idea, yeah.
It really needs to be bold.
The itemized.
We said not.
Itemized won't necess.
The encouraged, like the, that it's encouraged, whereas it's say.
It doesn't say, that, that's what we're saying, like that doesn't need to be necessarily in the policy. And I would recommend that it not specify in the policy, but then is there educating their staff in any operating procedures?
That's where, yeah.
That complements the policy and I like that.
So maybe we have a travel reimbursement form or directions.
Perfect.
So that's.
That would be the way.
Yes, yes.
I.
I have a question when, when you can.
Yes, Sarah, please.
Thanks, I just had a clarifying question about that. So I noticed it says, uh, tips are allowed to be reimbursable. Is that in, included in the $25 or is that on top of that? And then if we're needing to turn in an itemized receipt, that usually doesn't include the tip on there? So would we return in both receipts in that case?
Yes, yes, for both receipts. I will let Susan speak to whether or not those dollar amounts were intended to include the tip or up to that amount. Close the tip. And I think. Yeah, that was, that was something that I would, when I read through it, wasn't, I read it as that.
Up to the amount.
Well, when I initially read it, and that's why I was wondering, um, oh, no, it does say, so I overlook that. Okay, so Sarah, in that next paragraph, can you see the screen share? Where it shows the maximum allowable reimbursement for a $25 dinner plus tip is $25.
Which per person, I mean, that's, I think that's doable. We're encouraging eating breakfast and light dinner. Yeah, it's very healthy. I mean, you can, yeah, so.
I think it all depends on where you're at.
I mean, even if you're, you're, you're $25, you're doing $15, $9. A drink. Or something, I don't know.
Well, but if you don't.
Take everybody's.
Lambert.
And they give me something.
Baseds on the, the.
Oh, yeah.
HR.
Yeah.
Propose, so that's what we got on that.
Yeah.
And the direction.
Please, we're getting things for tips. Okay, does that answer your question, Sarah?
You're muted, Sarah.
There was a head nod there, but it sounds.
Yeah, so it doesn't, it includes that in the 25, right?
No, that sound, that looks like that's, that is there.
We also, um, made a change after my trip to Sacramento this week. We made a change and took out the Sacramento Napier Riverside and then moved it down to, and made a grid Sacramento Napier Riverside. Because I did not find a hotel room this week for less than $120.
I was going to say, I was just booking because my son has some out of town basketball tournaments. And $95, you are not staying in a hotel that has anybody reviewing it saying you won't get shot outside.
Yeah, or if even if you can because of the key lock for room. Also, I think a lot of them can not even book now.
But I just mean like, if you've got something that low in the Sacramento Napier Riverside area, you're probably not.
So we, we did up that and we may find ourselves needing two or three. So this again has inflation as an issue.
Right, right, yeah.
But it's a good starting point.
Also put contacts through. Go check for nerves.
And we do also look, um, for Airbnb's and we're setting a group somewhere.
I have found, and I would, I would encourage, even if it's an individual, I have found in the past week that I've been booking several lodgings that even as an individual, there's a lot of hotel room style units available. It's like a studio, so it's still private, you're not in a room in somebody's home that are less expensive than a hotel room and in safer parts of town. Yeah, so.
Yeah, so we, you know, we do what we can to keep our hosts.
That's great. I think, I think that's nice too because, you know, having. I think, I think that's nice, too, because, you know, having, having all of those numbers before you go into it, before you go out to eat, before you, you know, make those choices when you're traveling, um, I think it's nice, instead of coming back and being like, wait, I couldn't remember, and like, how much was this or that, having it all written out and super clear, I think is very helpful.
Just, just a question quickly for, like, Shady Creek, Pentecostal and stuff like that, when, when teachers have to drive, this, they already had it reimbursed for mileage? Or no?
There's a couple of things, teachers are paid as stipend for that extra work, and, um, yes, we travel.
And the mileage rate, if, for anybody who's not familiar, is actually, well, it's federal mileage.
Yeah, point five eight or point five.
I think it's.
Now it's point six five five. It kind of flows.
Yeah.
Yeah, changes every year.
Based on, well, in some years, like, uh, we have major inflation mid-year, they'll do a mid-year adjustment.
No, I do the same, I didn't think I had six though.
Thank you, oh, yeah.
Start asking for work out of town.
Stamps, stamps and gas, remember, right? All right, um, does anybody have any other questions or comments regarding the travel expense policy?
Nope.
Anything from the audience? Hearing none, and I will entertain a motion when somebody's ready.
I'll move that we accept the travel expense policy.
Thank you, Vicki, for the motion, thank you, Laurel, for the second. All right, and then I will call for the vote, and it doesn't have to be a roll call vote, because it's not contested, so it's just a. Yay or nay.
Yay or nay.
Or I.
And we all.
You don't even need a first name, we don't need a roll call vote.
Just by showing hands.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yay. Yay. Motion passed.
You killed me when you said your last name, I was like, oh, gosh.
I know.
Last name is just official.
I can't.
It's beautiful, and I know.
And that's the way that we, yes, and, you know.
Still raising my hand, we're on, you know, Zoom, like.
Is that something that you saw in training, that, that we no longer have to do that, or there's only?
So, roll call votes are only required if there's either any, um, like, contesting, like, if it's coming back because it didn't pass before, or, I can't remember all the nuances of it, or if there's, um. Any question of, like, who's attend, in attendance, there's a few little nuances.
Or if, if there's a, if, yeah, if there's a disagreement on the board, like.
If there was a nay, then we would have to go back.
We shouldn't do this.
Right, and then it still should be reflected the minute the individuals with their votes should certainly, it does still need to be reflected. But the time it takes for every individual to say their name, when we've already established who's at the meeting, um, everybody is still stating verbally, um, what their vote is, and then it doesn't have to be a roll call.
I, I don't know if it was accurate, but it was a person that actually didn't know them, he was a real stickler for procedures and meetings. And one of the things they said, and I actually thought, I kind of agreed with, was that a show, you know, like, even if you're doing it verbally, if your hand goes up, it's an indication, and then if you have people there, they.
I know, that's why I still raise my hand, you said that before.
That's great.
It's a age, yes, do you remember that?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, so, so I.
And I do like that.
I like that, you know, I think too, yeah.
We should just adopt that as a policy.
Just, yeah.
Did you like it? Procedure.
Yay, as a tradition.
Not the law.
Yay.
I like Trisha, she looks good.
All right, all right, as we digress further and further, uh, so our travel expense policy is approved and will now go into effect. Now that takes us to our first reading of the healthcare emergencies policy. Um, did anybody have any questions as they read through that? I really liked just the, the clarification of, you know, what the school's role is and isn't in the event of different things, because I think that there's sometimes a lack of clarity for parents, myself and.
Oh, no.
That, um, that people are trained more or differently than they, they in fact are, and so I think this does a great job clarifying that.
I'm sorry, I didn't really get the part about the rest, the do not resuscitate, I thought that that citizen kind of thing, I know that's an option, but you're kind of.
Can you scroll back to the top?
To the beginning of the liability. My understanding when I read it was saying that, like, if, if direction hasn't been given, like, so the assumption of it, you're not required to assume whether or not that's in place, like, a staff member, it's not necessarily privy to the, the medical information of that child, because they're not medical providers, they're teachers and administrators and staff members, and that, they're not obligated to, to know that information and then therefore act accordingly, so if somebody did have a do not resuscitate, and the teacher doesn't know that they have that, and the child or other person, then is not liable for not knowing that information.
Or a yard duty, or, yeah.
Right.
It's not something that we call the parent, say, your child is sick, and they say, did this happen, or this person's having one, we don't want you to resuscitate them. We're not gonna accept that, we're gonna go ahead and take them to the hospital.
Right.
And they can deal with the doctors and hospitals, they have all that legal stuff, we're not taking them, to me, that's what it's saying.
Yeah.
Unless, of course. If some information is given to me that I would say, yes, we're, you know, we're not gonna deal with that.
Yeah.
But, but we're not.
It's just like, you know, if you're CPR trained and you happen upon somebody and you don't know all of their medical information, you were to give them CPR, that you're not helped the same.
It's like a.
Legalities as, if they're in a hospital, and the hospital resuscitates them after they've signed a DNR, and so that's.
Can't imagine asking any staff member.
Yeah.
To do that.
Yeah.
To not try to do the best.
I believe it's called the Good Samaritan law that protects, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah.
But I, I like that this provides that clarification, so there's no expectation that.
If a parent had some, um, very strong feeling or objection, or whatever, they probably would put it in place, you know.
Yeah.
Put it in place prior to any advice as well, knowing you.
You know, we do.
Yeah.
For this.
Yeah.
I think one of you, because my mom had a student that was life flighted with a heart attack, elementary student, I think one of you, like, she's retired now, but it, she was at Citrus, I, I thought someone had said that they remembered that, I mean, something like that, where it was like a pre-existing heart condition, you know, and the, and in that case, there wasn't a DNR, but, you know, something to that severity, where it was possible that something could happen, and whether the parent chooses or to or to not have a DNR.
Yeah.
It would be like, like a staff meeting, you know, to inform and that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, and we.
Thank goodness.
Hope never too.
All right.
So, reading that, so this is the first reading.
Yes, does anybody, it was part of the packet, does anybody have any questions on it, or any changes they'd like to see made to it?
No, I think it was good, I think it's like, yeah, good to have.
Great.
I think it's, all the other reasons why, in our case, determine what, what they have.
Yeah, right.
The only thing, the word says S, executive director.
So, the type.
This executive.
Yeah, I thought, like, wait, what?
Maybe, maybe pitch that.
Under the A D's.
Laurel, I just don't want to say anything, Trish, I'm.
Yeah.
You should go down, Alex, on the.
It is a bit shocking that, that resuscitation of somebody having an opioid overdose has to be in the school. I mean, I think it should be there, but wow.
Um, do all aides or do all staff that are actually in the classroom have to have seat number first thing before entering the classroom?
All teachers have to be.
I know teachers, but aides.
Do our aides.
I think all our staff have to have.
Yeah, we always.
I know maybe admin, it's a little different, it's not directly, but I still, it's quite simple, but I figured for sure students, I mean, teachers.
Maybe even janitor staff.
Yeah.
I think all.
I think all.
Does it expire like every two years, right? Kind of like with weekends, I think mine's every two years.
Yes.
Last year, we approved some funding to make sure that that.
Fentanyl in.
That that's covered, or not covered, but supported. They have some options that they can take. Those that minimally support.
And, and just, not to get off more, but like, I had had training at something where my family member right in front of me, it's just hard at that one moment, like, rely and then have that trained there. Kind of like, kicks in. Kicks in.
Yeah.
And it, it doesn't really work, you know, and you don't really know, and all of a sudden you're in shock, and you're like, oh, my gosh, this, I need to do it, I saw it on the video, like, right now.
I resuscitated a guy in downtown Chico.
Wow. Were you able to get him back to?
He, yeah.
Wow.
He came back, and the paramedics met, the medic turned up, went to Chico. Wait, I have no idea how long he was there, but he was old, hungry, not very healthy, holes in his shoes.
The thing I remember from training, being in an emergency situation one time was, I just remember this, it was how you need to be directive, you don't say, somebody call nine-one-one, or you say, you, you know, and I, I just, I remember having to use that and thinking, man, I'm glad I was taught that, because I would know the person, go, somebody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You.
Alrighty, um, if there's nothing else in the policy.
It's a first, it's a first, it's a first test.
It is after seven. Would like to move forward.
A good job.
It's a review, hey, no voting.
But it does feel.
It does not. It does, it does, yeah.
I guess some guys talk at work sometimes, because they all like each other.
Yeah. I don't think we have a problem liking each other, so we'll go ahead and move on. And infectious diseases.
Privy.
Yeah. That's my segue, right? Special to the awkward segue. All right, same thing on this one, it's just the first reading, it also is in the packet, so if anybody has any questions or, um, thoughts.
Those are just the reportable diseases.
The only thing, I, when, when it says something like may, which is in the first part there, then it's an opportunity for some people to feel like, I, I don't have a solution, but it's an opportunity sometimes for some people to feel like it's been, um, used personally or.
Where are you seeing that?
Discriminating.
Now, this is the SOP, this is not the policy, this is gonna pull the actual policy up.
But where it says. Where it says, uh, Susan, about, they maybe ask for a doctor's note, can you go back a little bit?
So this is the SOP then, because this is all I received, I know of.
Okay, yeah, this is the SOP.
Okay.
Yeah, I kind of might, I'm like, I feel like they were merged into one, I thought maybe, yeah.
So then, since.
More than three days for an illness.
Okay.
Do you see what I'm talking about, Susan?
I do, yeah, um, yeah, I do.
I, and I guess I'm just saying, sometimes clarifying, under what circumstances, you know, even if it's just kind of known that if, if the child's out with X amount of frequency, we're gonna ask for a doctor's note, whereas, so a parent would know that would be applied under any circumstance, it's not personal, you know, but. You know, I don't know.
That's a good point, and then it talks about what we've been discussing, or the attendance in general, maybe having that soft counsel of independent study or something, it'd be better while they are. Tackling.
And I think it wouldn't even necessarily be necessary to spell it out here, but for, for example, you as the administrator, know that I will always ask at this point, and I don't care if, you know, your name is Joe Schmo and you just, you know, so people don't feel like it was applied to them.
Like, they were single now.
They were single now, yeah.
So, it's, yeah, so.
So, so you could just back it up by saying, at that point, we always ask, or.
Yeah, so, so an example of may would be like, we have a ninety-nine percent attending student that has, is out for four days straight. I don't tend to feel I need a doctor's note for that student, because they're always here a hundred percent, and it's clear that they were sick, they'll never do it, but as you said, I'll have, uh, someone that's there at, like, to absence, and they're like, calling a lot.
Yeah.
Out days, then I'm gonna want a doctor's note, so.
That also seems like it makes more sense to be in the attendance policy and not the communicable diseases policy. Just you could be out for a non-communicable disease and still need a doctor's note.
But it wouldn't be a bad idea to have it again, because you get a call, and so you're not reporting it, and you have had something, you just like, work or anything else after three or four days, in order to get anything.
Right, no, I'm just saying, like, it shouldn't, it shouldn't only be required by a doctor's note. Oh, hundred of this, so it seems like it makes more sense to be in the attendance policy.
Attendance policy does have that as one of the things they can do, is if they are kind of gonna hedge to not say whether we say may there or will also. So, but I, we are also in the process of creating an attendance plan for next year, so, um, you know, I'll have Amanda kind of share that with me, hopefully, when I start this up. She, she did the draft of it this last week, um, and, um, and we can talk about what that, you know, why and when we would implement that, and it is part of the plan, so.
I just meant, like, because what you were referring to, I think, within the procedures that go along with it, I just wanted to be clear that I didn't think it needed to be in the, this, because this is now the policy.
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be in there.
Because it's in the attendance policy.
It's just a, it's just a point.
Well, it's a point of care, it's, it, you know, it, that if, if, you know, I think a board member's child is always gone, and they are not asked for a note.
Right.
And, you know, new student that is causing a lot of discipline problems is asked for a note, that's what she's talking about.
Absolutely.
You know, are we, are we looking at this child because they have, have behavior problems and, and.
Or I don't disagree at all.
Because with their tendencies, so, yeah, it's a good, it's a good.
I have questions under reporting, um, is shigella supposed to be shingles?
I like shigella.
Oh, or something else, or is it?
That was what the nurse put in there, so I am, I was thinking like, I don't.
I, I'm not familiar with that.
It's a bacterial infection.
Okay.
It's a bacteria that causes an infection called shigalosis. Shigella can, shigella can spread easily from one person to another, and it only takes a small amount of shigella to cause illness. So I assume that.
Diarrhea.
It's a bacteria.
Okay, this causes diarrhea, abdominal pain.
Yeah, I just wasn't.
This, this list came to me from the nurse.
Okay.
I have not.
And, so the other question, I guess, on that, because it, it doesn't say et cetera or anything else, is that, like, is that how we want to leave it?
That's a good point, Liam, I like, you know.
We can request that information from Natalie.
Yeah.
Because, um, maybe it's on there, that means that these are the things of the health department that's such a huge detract.
And if it's a complete list, it's a complete list, if not, it should say.
Well, if it says, these diseases include, which sort of means, there are others not in there.
The sentences before that do, or the sentence before that does make it clear that, as defined by the state health department and designated on the chart in the school clinic, will be reported, and then it's, these diseases include.
So it's okay.
I think even with that, if you had a disease, it's like, the reportable diseases as defined by the state health department change.
Yeah, then the center would actually confuse it.
Yeah.
Right.
And it, there are very specific things that double two months before.
Right.
They do require you to.
Very specific.
Report.
Yeah.
Track and tell them whether or not, how many people have had shots and all that.
This isn't a list that changes frequently.
No.
So I think it's.
And it's not a list that, it's like, it's not a list that you and I would.
Get added.
This sounds like a good one, we should track, this is the health department saying, you track these.
Yeah, perfect.
I think that last paragraph is excellent, too, just, you know, assures people confidentiality.
Yes. Like, it's good to have in place. Good first reading.
Do we have any other questions or comments regarding the first reading, we won't be taking a motion today, if you still have more time to. taking a motion today. If you still have more time to, to read it again, if you'd like.
Would we consider bedbugs communicable?
What do you look like?
That's a really good point.
Not to report, but I think that there's procedures here.
Well, reporting to the school or the county, I think is the definition.
I don't know. I know the school I was at, and this has been quite a while, but, um, we had some people who got pretty aggressive about asserting that head lice were part of their lifestyle and-
It's been an issue.
That happens here, too.
No, I mean, it's been an issue in other schools. We have a head lice policy and nobody's ever-
That has racial or notoriety.
Or tones, too.
Thankfully, we haven't.
We have not seen that here and people have always been very appreciative of being informed of head lice and, and being checked.
Scratch.
They will, yeah, I know. They will come in and ask our, our, um, our health aide to examine their heads. I'm itching to examine.
Yeah, I just, I hope you don't go through that because it gets, it gets tough asserting that it's racism to, you know, I've been there as, you know, back in the day.
But we have not seen that.
Right.
And that is part of the lifestyle.
You must have a good dinner at home today.
No, my family already ate dinner. They did eight when I left. Um, all right. So that will take us into four points. So, oh, wait. Are there any questions or comments from the audience regarding the communicable and infectious disease policy? There's, there's a people. Okay. Seeing and hearing none, that will take us into item 4.7, the audit firm selection.
Um, this was run through the finance committee, um, last night and they agreed to suggest that we continue with our current firm. And this form is, this, um, the firm selection is due to the county by the end of this month, so.
Do you need to vote then?
Yes, we do.
And as a reminder and as a note and for the record, um, this firm does have multiple auditors, so it does still, um, honor the recommendation of, um, alternating auditors
I guess.
Every, every few years. And so it's still, we can stay with the same firm and have varied auditors to, um, for our production, really. So.
This is Kristen. I will move to approve 4.7, the audit firm selection. Audit.
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 Great. Thank you, Kristen, for the motion and Vicky for the second. Um, all of those in favor?
Aye.
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 And Joe, hands. Aye. Unanimous. Pass it. Isn't that much more efficient? All right. That takes aside item 4.8, Form 700.
And this is just a reminder that your Form 700 is due, um, at the beginning of April and, um, please get your Form 700 in. If you haven't done it before, we can help you with it. It's mainly reporting your county assets and assuring that there is no conflict of interest between the finances of the school.
Did you send us, did you want to book it up or do you have a form you want? I mean, I would just-
We suggest that you just go online and, and, and do it directly on the website.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the easiest way to do it.
Yeah. Some things have gotten you two over the years. That's one.
Yeah. Aye.
And who would fill that out?
You would.
You would.
Yeah, we all individually.
All board members.
It said finance. I didn't know if there was an appointed member.
No, it's your personal finance. So it has, it has, it's individual board member. She filed Form 700 and it's a reporting of, um, your assets and investments and your individual finances. And it's to ensure that there aren't conflicts of interest. Um, and so can we send it to Alex? Correct? Uh, no, you submit it directly online.
It's not quite as, uh, it doesn't need to be quite as detailed as it looks initially. You might want to talk to them because when you first look at it, you, you think, I'm not providing that. I mean, it's, it's a bit of an intimidating form, the initial time you look at it. So I just suggest.
That is a good point because I did that the first time.
What? You're not finding that?
I know.
You?
Well, now, when it starts talking about like listing things individually, I'm like, um, I mean, I have like managed investments and there's a lot of things in there and none of this, none of them are for business. So, um, but yes, there are some resources. And if you have, um, trouble doing it or you're not sure what to put on there or how to fill it out, and there should be some resources from CCSA that we can-
The Child School Association.
Yeah, CFCC. From like one of those four-letter agencies that we work with that helps us. CFCC.
Pretty good board resources.
Yes. And so it, it will help a lot because it fills everything. Okay. So with that, that concludes item four, um, on the agenda. We'll move into, or section four, we'll move into section five and get to hear from Susan, the executive director's report.
All right. So there's some favorite moments in here, but I want to add, you can read them. Um, I want to add a couple, um, that I definitely enjoyed myself. Number one was walking into the seventh grade rooms. They're working on their arguments and having students come up and argue with me, you know, say, this is my argument and being able to. So the one who thought potatoes were the, the best, you know, most flexible, I said, well, rice does all those things and things like, but I said, no, rice does this, rice does that. So, no, that's not a good, so I, I enjoyed being able to do that. And one of whom came through was basketball is the best sport. I said, well, soccer does that, too. And so I enjoyed being able to actually encounter arguments with them. So that was-
Which is super fun.
And then I truly enjoyed the participation.
Can we just say that they picked the wrong person to do the potato argument?
It is. I'm like, do you know who you're talking to?
Don't argue potatoes with a guy with rice. You are not, you are not.
You're not going to win this one. And then, um, the, the class door, the participation by staff, just, you know, walking down especially this hall, hallway with the older kids and sometimes the older kids don't work all that well together. But they were just amazing, um, during this system. And to watch them actually do the art that they were doing as they're sitting together, drawing and forming and it just was amazing, beautiful work. So I wanted to share those things as well as what's in the report. Then success of the, um, probably seen that in the eighth one, possibly two, very successful. Thank you, Alex. Um, Scholastic Book Fair, we sold more and did more than you anticipated. Always good to meet and be here. Your, um, survey, if your goals, we have a wellness survey and relationship surveys for students going out. Um, the wellness survey was reviewed by our, um, student council and they were very excited about it. Gave mainly a few little edits, but we're just really grateful that we were asking those questions. And then the relationship survey really asks the question, do you have an adult, a safe adult in school? And it asks it in a number of different ways, but that's really the purpose is like, do we have, do children have relationships at school with adults that they feel safe? So that's what that one is. Those should be going out soon. I, um, wanted to give my personal gratitude. I was out, um, supporting my husband for pretty much a month and, um, and so it just was really grateful for everybody's support and kindness and with all that. Um, and, you know, things rolled forward, even though it was in tears and that felt good.
The mark of a good leader.
Yeah. So staffing report, we did have, um, we had an, we have an offer out to an applicant for the kitchen position. We do have an opening there. Um, it looks at this point that that person is not going to, they haven't turned it down, but they also haven't, they've had the offer for a week and they haven't. So kind of in that place. So we'll probably be opening that back up possibly again. And then other than that, we are just preparing and planning. This is, this is the time when we start preparing and planning for next year. So, um, we are in the process of doing that. I don't have anything formal to report at this point, but should be able to do that in a week or so. Spring break, I was able to take a couple of days and go down to the Charter Schools Association in Sacramento. And so I brought forward for you a couple of items that I brought back from that thoughts. Um, one was, um, around, uh, restorative practices dealing with conflicts at the school and, and behavior issues. Um, I appreciated, um, he calls himself Coach C, works in the school in Southern California. I, I appreciated and recorded here how he defines different kinds of things that happen. So an encounter or misstep, for example, the encounter, the actual problem. A misstep is like running in the hallway, you know? We don't dispel children from running in the hallway. Um, the transgression is, uh, you've kicked over their blocks or bumped them in the line and the infraction is one of true feeling of un-safety, which is what we would call a level three of the potential suspendable offense. So there's the, a really clear definition of that, what we do to repair that. And then on top of that, what we do to transform it. And so that's, um, an issue we'll, those two are issues we'll continue to talk about with staff, um, that, you know, what really corrects the problem? Because when something happens, an apology and a sorry, that helps, but it doesn't necessarily, or suspension, it does show, hey, this is important, but it doesn't correct the problem. And so what is it that when, as we come back together, as, um, that staff or those students come back together, what are we doing to repair that? And how are we working with a student that, um, has acted out incorrectly? What do we do with him to help them learn what they need to do differently rather than just say, okay, you're gone for three days and now you're coming back? And you're expected to be a different person when you show back in the class because that doesn't happen and we all know that doesn't happen. So, so that's the work, um, that we see. Um, and we've been taught, we, we do restorative, um, practices. And again, this goes back to our grant that we just received. How are we doing it? How well are we doing it? And what training do we need to make sure we're doing well? So, so there's, so those are big things. Um, there was a significant story. It's, um, New West Charter School in Southern California. It's a high school in Southern California. And in our days of social media and everything else, um, they're very successful. If you go and look at their dashboard, they're great. Everything's great, beautiful. Um, they had, I would say about 40 alumni come back to them and very, um, vocally, uh, present the idea that they were not respectful of BIPOC students. And it was a shock to the staff because they considered themselves to be very good at this and on the top and, and doing this well. And so they were totally taken back by this accusation, but these are 50, you know, these are students that are now in Stanford and Berkeley, you know, these are not, you know, it's, uh, you know, a local hanging out with a corner group. These are people that are like, hey, this is not okay. And as they said, they have been taught well in this high school as to how to express themselves and this is what they were doing. So it was, um, a very heart-wrenching story for me. You can see it in the faces of the staff that were there sharing it. And this is one of the beautiful things about, um, the Charter School Association and the work that they do is we really share not only what works, but how we fix problems that we've had. So it was just a really beautiful thing. And I thought, um, that recollection as we go through and work with the task force and those things that are so important to us, to realize we need to, to approach this with humility and know that, um, that no matter how good we like think we may be doing, we may not be doing as well as we think we are because the lens that we have is the lens that we have. So I really appreciated that presentation and that work from them. Then there's a lot of policy that made me nervous about legal policies and advice. And so we will continue to work on that. And then I spent some time with the vendors there. We have had two, two discussions on these. One is a social emotional learning curriculum. So I've reached out, I have received information from a couple of companies that were there. It's always a dangerous thing because we get a lot of emails, but, um, so I've already ordered, um, one set of materials, uh, samples, one set of materials on SEL. And then some food vendors with some healthier options. And one of them's actually meeting with Chico Unified this week. So, and I did notice that we have, we now have for breakfast or lunch, we have a yogurt parfaits. That wonder. I thought, oh, you know. So as I, I talked to the one vendor that was talking, meeting with bits this week. She said, yeah, this is what everybody's talking about. This food is not, um, healthy. And so she shared some things, just like, um, a breakfast bar that has all natural ingredients, fruit and quinoa and it's still packaged.
It's not still good in 10 years.
Yeah, that's right. It's still packaged in the package and easy to hand out, but it is, yeah, it is all natural food. And so that, I think that we will see that move in nutrition, um, even if we don't go to our own, like, processing, well, we're starting to see that move.
Well, that's so great to hear that Chico Unified is also looking at this vendor because I know previously we were with a different vendor before Chico Unified and, you know, for many of the same reasons. It's why, but it was not executed as well, not by us, but by the vendor and the food didn't taste very good.
Yeah. Well, nobody, yeah, this was like, that's what I told you.
It doesn't work if you just then increase exponentially food waste and you still have hungry kids. So, yeah, that is why we switched to begin with. And so I'm excited to hear because I feel like when you have a, a larger group, like a school district, um, that is, and multiple districts really all over that are pushing these changes, um, there's more power behind that change. And so then you have more options that taste good and provide those healthy.
And, and this is what the vendor was saying.
Yeah.
A number of the vendors there are like, oh, you're too far north.
Right.
But we'll look at what you do anyway to see if it's something we can, like, copy. But, um, it was definitely, yeah, this is, this is the direction, healthy, fresh food. Let's get away from cinnamon rolls and cookies.
Yes.
A little bit more. And so that is definitely, the parent council talked about that also.
Wonderful. Even if they do go through the vendor because of our district and being, I know we're at like 50% low income, would it still be an option for free for children if they were to get a snack lunch?
It is, California has food for everyone.
Oh.
So, you know, as long as that continues. And that is lovely. Yes, it just takes away any sort of-
Stigma.
Stigma, yeah. So, so we're grateful.
We've got kids, we have a special punch card to do that.
I know, I don't want to dig ourselves. I just have to say one thing also about being, like sharing, being one of the fact that like, we don't have a factory style, sit down, eat your food, teacher takes off. It's very intimate. It's very warm. It's almost romantic, some of these lunches that they're having, you know? And so a little bit without accountability. I know that we've had teachers both in the beginning, um, reach out to parents to, you know, make sure they have a protein before coming to school because this will affect their attitude and, and just really keep having those conversations with parents, just little resources and stuff like that, you know? It makes the day easier for everybody. We are relieved, you know?
That's great.
Well, and it was a big topic that Tom Holy had a couple of years ago, that nutrition. So, so I think that's really good.
Yeah, it's an ongoing issue. It's in our outcap. It's something that we need to figure out how to address.
Maybe it's also how you approach parents because directing them to do something is, it may feel to them like their circumstances are ignored, whereas if you say, gosh, your, your child told me they had oatmeal and I actually could notice that they were, um, more focused and, you know, kind of reinforcing what, when the parent gets it right, you know?
Yeah, for sure.
Awesome.
Susan, in regards, you said the New West Charter School, that presentation you heard, I was thinking, um, back to the equity and inclusion. Also, it was really good that when Nick presented, he talked about the book, That's Not My Name, and talking about pronunciation. I feel like that's a really positive thing there. And then, um- And then I have two books, I'm taking a class right now, it's Diversity and Inclusion, that I'd like to drop off to you. One is a graphic novel on Laotian families, do you know, it's the book in common for Chico State. And then the other one is a workbook, a diversity workbook that we did in the class. So I can bring those by, yeah.
Susan, a book that might be really wonderful, too, to integrate is Cha, She Makes Soap and She Worked at the Library for Years and Years and all, so if you've seen.
I bought that for the class, yeah.
Yeah, okay, good, yeah, it's a beautiful book with embroidery and, yeah, I should have known you'd do.
She has the best soap.
I should have known you'd know about it.
Yeah.
So while we're on books, I want to recommend really quickly a book, it's called Elizabeth and Hazel, Two Women of Little Rock, and there's a really famous picture of, of a Anglo girl, a white girl, just with her teeth and, you know, and, and then a very intimidated black girl carrying her books in the school, it's a very, very famous photo. And I just want to say, I read that book and it was very, you know, I pride myself on not being a racist and my grandmother marched with Martin Luther King, but when I read that, it was very humbling for me to acknowledge some blind spots in myself, so I just recommend that book tremendously, tremendously, and it's called, again, Elizabeth and Hazel, Two Women of Little Rock. And it's, it's nonfiction and it's just a terrific book.
Thank you. Thank you. Okey-dokey. Does anybody else have questions for Susan?
No.
No? Okay, thank you so much, Susan. And I know that we have closed session, the agenda, but is it correct that we don't have an executor, executive director's evaluation to review tonight? I apologize that I missed that under the agenda modification, but we will not be holding closed session tonight because we don't have evaluation.
Before we do that, did we, last meeting, we were still waiting to see if we had another person, I don't remember. I think Vicki Laurel and then they were going to try and get Chelsea, too, if they needed.
As a back.
I got the email, we can meet briefly.
I know better than to meet, miss meeting, I know better.
We didn't, we just said we were doing.
As a back, as a back.
I would see everybody in the room, like, oh, let's, let's have a choice.
I said next year.
I won't be here, so you can't.
Then I am going to say something, the last topic we're talking about, since we're not going to the conference. I would say that.
I'm not as relevant to the agenda because we are still.
We ended up with, talked about L cap and equity, and my last thing about the books is that I already noticed that in our, the plays that we do are from different time eras and that I noticed that the roles are not always set, doesn't matter if it was, the message that has to be a male, or let's say, I just really already feel right away that girls don't feel like, God, I'm not going to be able to apply, I can't, I can't audition for that, I'm not a boy, I can't be a knight, and I think that's just like a standard.
Yeah.
Over our school, so I, really, it's like, the teacher's like, who's really wanting to do this, it doesn't matter, so, so that's, because it's pretty awesome.
So with that, and we will be, like I said, removing closed session, not, well, tabling for the next meeting, my apologies, Susan, we are committed to getting together and finishing that, but wanting to do it well and do it well. And that takes us then to item seven, the next meeting, Tuesday, April eighteenth at six P M. And unless there are any questions about April eighteenth at six P M, I will go to the meeting. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.